Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May 22, 2024, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. And it is a delight to see a full audience. We haven't seen that in a very long time. Thank you all for coming out. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Vice Chair Alain.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, the agenda was available for public access at the City Hall Exterior Bulletin Board and at the Planning Services Counter by 9:00 PM on Thursday, May 16th, and posted online in accordance with our requirements under the state law.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda? And just before I do that, I'm wondering how many people are here on the public hearing item for the Palm Springs Country Club? I think that would be all of the, almost all of the audience. So I will not, I will not make a motion to change the agenda. Is, can I have a?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. At this point is the time for public comment, just, for public comment. It's been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and items that are in our subject matter jurisdiction. We can only take action on items that are posted. Each speaker will have three minutes. Testimony for public hearing may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. And members who would like to comment on the consent calendar or new business and new, the new business items are the cannabis and draft EIR items, should make their comments at this time. If you are here on the Palm Springs Country Club item, you can make comments at this time or at the time of the hearing. Either members of the public who wish to speak. If you'd come up and sign in, if you'd come up, then please.
I have the liaison between the Whitewater Club, Country Club, and the Neighborhood Association. I only have, I guess, two questions. In the beginning of this, and I've been here for many years, the former owner, maybe he's still the owner, I don't know, insisted when we questioned them that they would have a wall around the whole radius of the Whitewater Country Club, which is four individual HOAs plus Alexander Estates. When I look at this, I don't see that fence or that wall. I would like to address you and ask, is that still on the agenda for the development?
We don't answer questions at this time, so we've heard your question.
Okay, and the next thing I'd like to address, and you don't answer the question, the entrance to this development. That's all. Those are my two things. You don't answer questions, that's fine. I just, would you like to take a note, please?
Is?
Greetings, Commissioners and City Staff. I'm actually speaking on item 4B, but I have to leave for an HOA meeting, so I can't stick around for the discussion. But I will review it on video later. Appalling visual blight now characterizes the Riverside County cities of Moreno Valley and Redlands due to the uncontrolled proliferation of massive distribution warehouses. The proposed two-story warehouse project in North Palm Springs is almost 740,000 square feet in size and 50 feet in height, rivaling the largest warehouses in the county. If the city approves this project, its location, just .32 miles north of Interstate 10, will dominate expansive northern desert views that motorists see when driving on I-10. Yet, in the aesthetic section of the draft EIR, possible impacts to scenic views are dismissed by focusing on views as observed solely from roads directly adjacent to the project site. However, there is no analysis of the negative impact of desert views to the tens of thousands of cars driving along Interstate 10 looking north towards the mountains. How is it possible that a mass of 739,360 square foot, 50-tall building will have, quote, "no substantial adverse effect on a scenic vista"? The report states that "unobstructed views of Little San Bernino Mountains to the north and Santa Rosa Mountains to the south will remain visible due to the orientation of the project along Indian Canyon Drive," concluding that impacts will, quote, "be less than significant." But by looking only at mountain views, the report ignores views of the expansive desert that also characterized the Coachella Valley. In order for you as Commissioners to make a careful evaluation of aesthetic impacts, I strongly recommend that you request the preparation of simulated perspective views of the proposed warehouse within the surrounding desert from various motorist viewpoints when heading east and west along Interstate 10. The draft EIR states that one of the project objectives is to, quote, "develop a state-of-the-art industrial fulfillment center in the industrial land use area in Palm Springs that is consistent in use and look with the existing developments in the surrounding area." Consistent in use and look? The biggest warehouse in the area is the FedEx Ground facility south of I-10, which at 150,000 square feet is just 20% of the size of the proposed project. Clearly, that objective is not met with the proposed project. However, the draft EIR does provide other alternatives for the commission to consider, such as Alternative 3, a more typical industrial park. Ultimately, neither the Planning Commission nor City Council should be complicit in the desecration of our beautiful desert by approving a 740,000-square-foot monstrosity for fleeting financial gain, regardless of whether other desert cities succumb to such short-term thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Diana Grace, and I am a resident of the Four Seasons, which is immediately adjacent to the Serena Park project. During the period of time that Eric Taylor was the developer of the project, I was the president of our association, and I was also the chairperson of our ad hoc Serena Park Committee. During that time, we entered into a memorandum of understanding and agreement regarding the dedication and sale of common area with Mr. Taylor. And that involves the dedication of Golden Sands Drive to the city becoming a public thoroughfare, which currently it is a private street owned by our HOA. I provided a copy of this memorandum to Mr. Newell on Monday, and I believe you've probably seen a copy of it. The reason we're concerned is that the agreement is binding on all successors and assigns, so the current prospective developer is binded by this agreement. And we are fully prepared to go forward with this and dedicate the street to the city. And in consideration for that, Mr. Taylor agreed to enclose our retention basins that are adjacent to Golden Sands with a block wall, consistent with what we have now. And also, there are certain streets which are Savannah Way and Desert Breeze, which immediately abut Serena Park, and he agreed to take down those wrought iron fences and build a similar block wall. I did bring copies, I don't know if there's any representatives here of the new developer, I did bring copies of the memorandum in case they would like it. And also, in August of 2016, Eric Taylor submitted a letter to Flynn Fag, who at that time was the head of the Planning Department, setting forth some restrictions which we agreed to regarding mitigation of construction traffic noise on our homeowners and distribution of the impact of construction traffic across all of the adjacent neighborhoods. And at an appropriate time, we would like to meet with the new developer to discuss these, to see if they are amenable to any of them or all of them. It basically limits entry into the development, certain hours of delivery, and things like that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Brad Clay, and I'm located adjacent to Golden Shores Drive, my property right there. The traffic situation, I think everybody here is concerned about that, and also the entries to this Serena project. I'd like, being a new owner there, I'd like the information resubmitted on any of these changes that they plan on making and the timeframes. So if that's possible, I think, you know, the new people would appreciate that, okay? Because it is going to be an impact to everyone over there. You're talking about this many houses, Whitewater Drive Residential, Golden Shores Residential, the openings down on Farrell, all residential. Those are the only places they're going to come in there unless they show that there's going to be access to that property from other ends. And I'd like to have that resubmitted to the new people that just moved in, that weren't here some time ago when they first started developing this. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Steve Braff. I'm a longtime Palm Springs resident, and I serve on the Osweet Land Trust Board. I'm reading from a supplemental comment letter from the Osweet Land Trust to the Palm Springs Planning Commission, and this regards the Country Club's request for an amendment of the development agreement for Serena Park. The Osweet Land Trust is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit land conservancy. We're dedicated to preserving critical habitat for wildlife corridors and sensitive species. We, the Osweet Land Trust, are asking the city to deny the applicant's request for an extension of time to pay the extensive fee arrangements under the developments agreement. The applicant has had at least eight years, eight years to comply with the terms of the agreement. The considerable advantage outside of the very progress and challenges, challenges, I'm sorry, all other developers must comply with, that gives them a considerable advantage granted to the developer in exchange for payment of fees, which were to be paid, those fees would be paid in lieu, and create other open space opportunities. It simply hasn't happened. It's never occurred. The developer has received the advantages over time and remained insulated from this city's open space planning process. Because of these considerations, and because so much time has changed in the thinking and planning of our city, we ask that the developer's request be denied. The equity is simply not consistent with the landowner in this instance. Calling out a few other points briefly, the First Amendment and restated developer agreement was approved by the Palm Springs City Council, September 30, 2021. It wasn't until, I'm sorry, until May 6, 2024, two years, eight months after its approval, that it was recorded in the county of Riverside. This delay is, this recording delay is a violation of the Palm Springs Municipal Ordinance 94.08.00. Second, that first amended and restated development agreement appears to be, by its terms, to transfer density from Chino Park, Chino Canyon, I'm sorry, to Serena Park into an area that was initially designated under the land use of open space and recreation parks. The agreement occurred in 2016-17, when the city of Palm Springs made prolific use of the planned development district permit to bypass our general plan requirements and zoning. The city felt free to do so because it was a charter city. Since that time period, state courts have now clarified charter cities must adhere to general plan policies in the same manner as general law cities. Third, the project simply fails to conform to the current open space requirements by the general plan ordinance, including the golf course convergence. Lastly, the California Environmental Quality Act should be assessed for significant change of the EIR, or the change in the development agreement.
Sir, sorry, your time is off and the mic is actually off. Yeah, thank you.
Are there other members of the public? Thank you.
Last two years, so I don't have a long history. But regarding the Palm Springs Country Club, what I understand is that the current owner of the land is kind of in default of the original agreement from 2016, which then was updated in 2021, and now is requesting that that very same agreement just gets carried forward. But the environment has changed. There's a new city regulation that if a golf course gets converted, 50% of it's supposed to be open land. I understand there's a clause in there that in lieu of open land, there will be a payment, but that has been there since 2016, and the payment hasn't happened. So how do we know that it actually will happen, especially since apparently there's a new developer coming in who's, but not present yet? So there's, whatever you decide today will apply to a new developer who actually we don't know yet. So that adds to the uncertainty. And if a payment is actually being made, how can we, as citizens, be assured that this will actually be used to acquire open space and not just kind of disappear in the budget? So earmarking that. So with all these questions, I think there's a lot of open questions that certainly I don't fully understand right now, and it makes me wonder if this is really ready to be decided today. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gary DiRusso. I'm a resident at the Four Seasons Association. In May of 2017, private property common area known as Golden Sands Drive was allegedly illegally deannexed from the Four Seasons Association by the 2017 Board of Directors and their lawyers. First, at the time of deannexation, ownership of Golden Sands Drive was vested as owners in common, requiring the signature and approval of every owner in common to sell, encumber, or deannex all or any portion of private property common area. That did not happen. Instead, the Board of Directors and their lawyers created an alleged illegal vote. Second, property owners at the Four Seasons Association reimbursed the builder, K. Hovnenian, $36 a square foot for private property common area, making the purchase price of Golden Sands Drive $912,000. The Board of Directors and their lawyers informed the association members that Golden Sands Drive had an appraised value of $110,000. That is $812,000 less than we paid for the property. However, the Board of Directors and their lawyers failed to mention to the association members that their appraisal for Golden Sands Drive was for the future value of a public right-of-way. The future value of a public right-of-way does not define the fair market value of private property common area, that which we were allegedly illegally voting to deannex. Palm Springs City officials and Four Seasons Association Board members and lawyers engineered the taking of private property for public use without compensation to the 476 member owners at the Four Seasons Association. Expropriation of private property for public use without compensation is unconstitutional. Golden Sands Drive was allegedly illegally deannexed 47 years in advance of the contract due date of February 2064 without a request for beneficiaries' demand as required by law. Private property common area Golden Sands Drive has a contract value of $28 million and a 47-year lease value of $10,320,000. In July of 2017, City of Palm Springs officials Moon, Coors, Mills, and Roberts voted to accept alleged stolen property.
Sir, your time is up and your microphone has been turned off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We have one additional speaker who has signed up, who can speak at the time that the item is heard. We also have several members online, so I might ask them, Madam Chair, if they wish to speak now or later.
Please.
If you are attending online and you wish to speak now, please raise your hand. Alternatively, you can speak during the item for which you're attending. No hands are raised, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The public hearing, there being no other speakers, the public hearing is closed and the matter is, or the public hearing is closed.
This is still public comment.
Moving on to the consent calendar, I've had a request that we hold that at this time and come back to it at the next meeting.
Right. I think there were some questions raised from some of the Commissioners about some of the added conditions related to the Dogs Are Dope item. And so we just wanted to go back and re-watch the video and just make sure that we were capturing the motion made by the Commissioners appropriately. So if we might, we'll return with it at the next meeting.
And so can I take a motion to postpone this to our next meeting?
Motion to postpone the minutes till next meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along to the public hearings, we are at PNG1 LLC on behalf of Palm Springs Country Club LLC for an amendment of the development agreement for Serena Park, a residential development consisting of 386 attached and detached residential units, streets, private open space, and public park on 125 acres of land located east of Sunrise Way, north of Verona Road, and southwest of the Whitewater River floodplain within Section 1 and 6. A staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. So the matter before you, as you've stated, is a request to amend an approved development agreement between the current owner and the city of Palm Springs. The proposed agreement is between now the new buyer of the property and the current owner as well as the city. The amendment itself is proposing to amend certain terms of the approved development agreement. It's not to restate the entire development agreement as we did when it was previously amended. And the amendment is related to the Serena Park Development Project, which involves 386 attached and detached single-family dwellings, specifically 294 detached single-family homes and 92 attached single-family homes. Over the 126-acre site, it was formerly the Palm Springs Country Club Golf Course. When it was entitled in 2016, it involved a general plan amendment, Plan Development District, Ten of Track Map. And these entitlements were conditioned upon the processing of a development agreement to address policies in our general plan. So this, what you see here on the screen is the layout of the proposed project within the former golf course site. As you can see, it does, it is situated within existing neighborhoods, including the islands in the center, which are established, the Mobile Home Park to the north, and the Palm Springs Country Club condominiums and single-family homes to the south in the center. Four Seasons wraps, Four Seasons HOA community wraps around the north, and then there's established single-family homes to the south of the proposed project. single-family homes to the south of the proposed project. In terms of the history of the development agreement, it was originally approved in 2017. It set forth several terms that were outlined in that agreement. There was a minor amendment that was done in 2018 as it relates to how the development agreement fee was to be paid and, and then, so that was really the kind of the formal first establishment of the development agreement. In 2021, the city amended the development agreement and restated all of the terms. We revised the performance schedule at that time, the timeframe for paying the development agreement fee, and addressed an issue related to the utility undergrounding that the applicant had requested the city identify. So those were kind of some of the major changes. The first being relating to the development agreement fee, a portion of that was due November of 2021. The applicant did pay $500,000, which was required at that time. The remaining balance of the development agreement fee, which was $2.5 million, was due on November 1st of '22. However, prior to that time, the city did notify the owner that they were in default due to maintenance obligations that we believe were not being adhered to, among other things such as complying with the performance schedule that was established. So the applicant, as I said, is, the application was submitted by the purchaser of the property who has an escrow with the current owner. They're seeking to revise certain terms of the development agreement. So to start, specifically, the performance schedule has been modified now to address the recordation of maps for the development, starting with the first phase at the southeast corner of the project and concluding with the last phase at the northwest corner of the project for the proposed homes. And the timeframe for that would be, the first phase would start in June of '25, recordation of those maps, and conclude in 2027, November 30th of 2027. So all of the development agreement, under the new performance schedule, the applicant would be required to comply with that, this proposed timeframe, and part of that is payment of the development agreement fees. So two pieces to that. First, that the development agreement balance that is owed right now would be increased from 2.5 million, that's outstanding, to 3.2 million for the balance that's due. And the timeframe for which that would be paid would begin, as I mentioned, in June of next year, no later than June of next year, with the remaining balance completely paid by November of '27. So those are the two issues related to the development agreement fee, and essentially the timeframe for complying with the development agreement schedule. The park would be built, that the public park that's part of the project at the southeast corner of the site is required to be built as a part of that first phase, which would be no later, start no later than June of '25. The city requested that we memorialize maintenance and security obligations as a part of the proposed amendment. So in the draft amendment that is part of your materials, Section 4.04 of the amendment would identify requirements for the applicant to remove trash, debris, and graffiti on a monthly basis, annually apply a dust control sealant to the property, install surveillance cameras to minimize and reduce the likelihood of trespassing, provide daily patrols of the property, and install no trespassing signs. Finally, the applicant has requested that the city cooperate in the Community Facilities District financing for the project to assist with financing of public infrastructure and development impact fees. So those, the city and the agreement would cooperate with the developer to assist with some of the impacts related to the financing. I would note that the City Council did adopt a resolution in 2014 authorizing the city to join the statewide community infrastructure program, and that would essentially be the program that we would typically look to see the proposed facilities district administered In terms of the process for this agreement, because it is a proposed amendment to the terms, we are processing it as a public hearing as required by Section 94 of our zoning code. It does require public hearing by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. So your recommendation tonight would go to City Council, and the council would hold a separate public hearing on this application. And there are five findings that the commission is required to make as a part of the review of the development agreement, and staff has provided a summary of those in your staff report, beginning on page five. Essentially, that the development agreement is consistent with our general plan, it's compatible with the uses that are authorized within the agreement, the development agreement is in conformity with the public convenience, general welfare, and good land use practice, the development agreement will not be detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare, and not adversely affect the orderly development of property or the preservation of property values. The staff has outlined how the proposed agreement, again, it's an amendment of the existing terms, it's not a complete restatement of all new terms, and essentially, the development that was proposed in 2016 remains the same as it is today. There's no proposed changes as a part of what's before you. The project remains in compliance with the general plan, land use that was approved back in 2016. The number of units remains the same, the site plan, the layout, the configuration remains the same. So for those reasons, staff believes that, I would further also mention that we are memorializing a lot of the maintenance and security requirements that were not part of the prior development agreements, and I think that, again, goes back to how we're protecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the surrounding residents. So with that, staff did recommend approval of the development agreement amendment that you have before you. And that completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
David, does the city have any other currently operating community facilities districts?
The city has looked at doing community facilities districts under the skip program in the past. I'm not sure that we have any currently in place. We do have a community facilities district that we require of all residential development projects to pay for police and fire services, and that's our typical requirement that the city administers, if I'm correct. And I'm looking to our city engineer to help us with this.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, the CFD that David just spoke about for police and fire, that's required on all new developments of five units or more, right? So that's imposed on all of them, they have to annex into that. So all current projects since the inception of that CFD have all annexed into. In regards to a CFD for skip financing, the only other one that I know of to date is the Canyon View project, which is down on East Palm Canyon and Matthew Drive. They're the only other one that I know of that has skip financing involved with their project.
That's the project that's not yet under construction, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner? Hi, David. Couple of questions for you. On page seven of the staff report, it's item three, C and D, it refers to mitigation measures previously found not feasible would in fact be feasible. Can you elaborate on what's going on there, what that means?
Essentially, what we are doing in these, the restatements that we have here are from the secret guidelines. We are essentially saying that there's nothing showing that the certified EIR, that the mitigation measures that were previously established, to date, we haven't determined that any of them have been found to not be feasible. So there's no information or evidence to show that the city hasn't been able to implement what was currently approved in the EIR.
Okay. And then, in the development agreement, let's see what, this page, under the security measures, talks about no less than four onsite locations for cameras. So how is that number established and where did the staff sort of anticipate they might go?
Under the prior agreement, there was no specificity, and I think staff wanted to have a little more specificity in the proposed agreement to look at primary access points for the site that we know of today. So I think it was probably the current entry points that we looked at when we found barriers that were broken or being accessed.
Is there a security issue along the open desert area, though? Don't you have quite a bit of a homeless issue going on there now?
Yeah, the current owner did modify some of the trees or cut down some of the trees that were along that edge to create a barrier. There have been breaks in that barrier, and we certainly have seen evidence of homeless activity along that edge of the property. So that, we do foresee that that location could be a good candidate for a camera.
And then, the other thing was relating to the timing of the CV link, and is there anything that we should consider in terms of, I didn't see it specified in any of the phases, and is there something that should be stipulated in terms of when that should be built?
I'm not currently up to speed on when, what the timing is. I know they're starting construction along that, well, southeast of this location, along Whitewater, Whitewater River edge there. I would have to look into that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Ryan and then Commissioner Murphy.
I have a couple of questions relative to reviewing the materials, and a couple of questions after listening to some of the input of the public that has been here. They've raised a couple of issues that I'm curious about as well. First of all, the fact that the development agreement is currently, or the current owner has been found in default on the development agreement, I believe the agreement has not been terminated? And if that's the case, if one party is in default, but the agreement is not terminated, is it fair to say the development agreement is still in full force and effect?
Yes. I would say that unless the city formally execute, or, excuse me, terminates the agreement, is still in full force and effect.
Okay. One of the questions that was raised by, I believe, in some correspondence we got, and then by somebody here tonight who was speaking, dealt with the fact that the applicant, according to the municipal code, is supposed to be the, excuse me, is supposed to own the property. And I understand that this seems to be a joint application between the current property owner and the proposed new property owner. Is that correct? And if so, is that acceptable as a valid application?
Yes, that's correct. And the current owner did give full authorization to the applicant, or the co-applicant in this case, to proceed with the entitlement and act on their behalf. So we do have that documentation in our file, and the code does allow for that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. There was also reference, and we received a copy of the memorandum of agreement for dedication of the Golden Sands Drive, and frankly, I was confused reading the agreement, and I'm just wondering, is this relevant to anything that we're doing today?
The agreement is between private parties. It does acknowledge that the city is relating to the Golden Sands entry and Four Seasons ownership. It does acknowledge that right-of-way is required for access to this project. We do have the necessary materials to essentially effectuate that application and create the public right-of-way, and so our engineer here has the history on that, and as far as the city is concerned, it's been processed in accordance with requirements that were established under the map and the approved project.
Okay, so if there are disagreements or issues that are between private parties and they don't affect what we're doing here tonight?
Correct. But I would just add that, to some of the comments that were raised earlier and questions that we would be in agreement that that would carry forward to any future owner, and those agreements are in place. So the agreement for the city right-of-way and for the public, for there to be a portion of Golden Sands that becomes public road, remains as a result of this action.
All right.
And if I may-
I may also just quickly add, you know, any sort of, this appears to be, again, based on an HOA issue, private property right issue at the time. This occurred back in 2017, according to the letter. We believe that any challenge to that legally would be well past the statute of limitations by now, so this is established history now.
Could the city attorney announce themselves before they start speaking? We didn't know who was speaking.
A voice came from above.
Sorry, Jim, you weren't on the screen.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Madam Chair, Jim Priest, best best to you, your city attorney.
Okay, thank you. I noticed one of the differences between the amended and restated agreement and the proposed first amendment to the amendment, amended and restated agreement, is in the schedule and not, ignoring the dates, I noticed that the terms and the way they're presented are different, and it seems to me material, but I'm not sure what the intention is. In the first, amended and restated development agreement, we have very concrete milestones such as recordation of a map or completion of the construction of infrastructure in different phases. In the proposed amendment to the amended and restated development agreement, everything is in terms of ready to record, and I'm, to me, that doesn't give me the same security as something that has actually been recorded or something that's actually been built. Is there a reason for the change in nomenclature from one schedule to the next?
I don't know that that was something that we picked up on in terms of ready to record versus recorded. Perhaps we can ask the applicant if that, the intention with the way it's written is to say that they've gone through all of the steps necessary with our engineering office to record the map and then actually get it recorded.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's see, I think I just have one more. And the fact that there was a two-year delay in the recordation of the amended and restated development agreement, is that material, was that just something that fell through the cracks? Was there a reason why it wasn't done, and does that change its effectiveness?
From what I can see happened, it looks like the, the city had issues getting it recorded with the county clerk because there was a graphic that was attached to the agreement, which is the park, the graphic with the park on, as an attachment. It fell through the cracks, and so ultimately, it just never got recorded, it was sent, they rejected it, and it never ultimately got through the process until we discovered that it hadn't gotten recorded. So I think it just fell through the cracks because of this issue.
Okay, but the fact that it did fall through the cracks for a period of time does not make it invalid, ineffective, void?
Correct.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Ms.-
Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, David, I had a question about the, I struggled a little bit with the one graphic that was in this report. Trying to figure out how much of this development is actually open space. There's references to, in Exhibit C, to dog park, separated, a separate fenced park for large dogs with turf, a separate fenced dog park for small dogs with turf, a large open play area with turf and shade trees, and a demonstration garden. And I couldn't find in here, and I may have just missed it, what is the kind of approximate size of that relative to the development?
The areas of open space are 67 acres, and it's on Page 7 of the original agreement.
So it's 67 acres total, open?
67 total acres.
Including the dog parks?
I think that includes the dog park, correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's with public access, all of it?
Some of, some of that would go out into the wash because the owned land goes out into the wash. The, this, just in memory, I spent a couple of years on this, is that there is public access through the roadways. CV link is supposed to go through the roadways here, which is one of the issues I want to raise in terms of when this is going to get done. But the public access really is to the park.
Okay.
And not to all of the open space, although because some of it's in the wash, it is open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Just one point of clarification. So the 67 acres of open space within the development is over and above the public park. So there's 67 acres plus the acreage of the public park, which I don't know, which is roughly 4.3. So it's over 70 acres of open space total.
Do you have more questions?
No.
I had some that came from the public comments, so I want to ask them of staff and our attorney. This project was entitled prior to the golf course preservation act, and it is my understanding that we changed, in the approvals, we changed the zoning for this parcel from open space to very low density residential. Is that correct? Has that zoning change gone through?
That's correct.
So for the members of Oswood who asked the questions, if we denied this, this would not automatically, it would no longer be open space, and it would no longer necessarily be, be subject to the golf course ordinance?
Correct. The site has been re-designated, and that happened in 2016 by council action and resolution.
So the only recourse to the preservation of open space in this comes through Section 2.2, which was the, the payment of a fee for, for the open space. And that is still memorialized in, in the agreement, I believe in the original agreement, it came in 403E, which was the open space with the compliance with the general plan policy 2.2, which provided for the substitution of open space. But that, that portion is still, is still in the agreement, and it's still, it hasn't been taken out of the agreement.
That's correct, yep.
And also, the, the sections 4.3, which is the developer, public benefits to be provided by the developer, those are still, and they're fairly significant, those are still in the, in the development agreement that we would be, if we approve this or deny it, it's still in what's before us. Is that correct?
Correct. The amended development agreement has some specific revisions that are called out for each subsection that it amends, but overall, yes, it still remains.
And then there was a question from the four condo associations and the one homeowner association as to whether the development had required a wall to be built around those existing built, that existing built portion of, of what had been the golf course land. My memory was that in what we approved back in 2016, there was not a wall included in that. Am I correct?
It was, back in 2016, it was based on what the HOAs requested, and the developer was working with each HOA based on what they wanted to do for the perimeter wall between the project site and their HOA.
So all I'm saying is, I, because we would have memorialized a development plan at that point in time, I know that the developer was negotiating, I think I've never seen a developer who negotiated with the public more than the developer who did this, but I don't recall that there was a wall completely surrounding. So I just wanted to give an answer.
There actually is an item in the development agreement itself in 4.03, and it is subsection I, number three, which says, "New walls adjacent to any phase of the Whitewater condominiums shall be built per the landscape exhibits in the planned development," it says permit, but district, "prior to commencement of grading of any area adjacent to that phase." And I do believe in looking through those landscape plans, there are walls shown along portions of that.
But along portions, but not entirely?
And we would have to confirm exactly where, but there are walls contemplated in certain locations, and I do believe that was the result of the negotiations with, with the HOA, as David said.
Then, then I wanted to go a little bit to the facilities district agreement. It's, this is very, this is very, I'm just going to say, it's very unfortunate what this community has gone through regarding this development, that people have sat with this for years and years, not only not having something built out, but having it be difficult for their communities to live next to it in terms of problems, vandalism, blowing sand, you know, other, other kinds of things. It's taken a long time. So with the communities, facilities district, I'm assuming that's in our purview to recommend that to city council or not recommend that, correct?
Whether to include the, the CFD, you could certainly, in whatever motion you make tonight, include a recommendation to the city council regarding that item.
One of the questions I have is timing. It seems to me that timing would be really important on this, timing of building the, at least enough of, putting enough of the infrastructure in so that the, the key roads are put in, so that the park is put in, so that the gates are put in. And if, if there's a recommendation of the facilities district, can that be tied to the timing of many of the benefits that are, and, and something sufficient so CV link can continue and go through the property, and that that's one of the things that's Can that be built in? I know the facilities district helps to pay for that, and people are eventually going to pay a Melrose bond for that as a, as opposed to paying for that in their house, in their house cost. But can, can we put timing requirements on the, on the build-out of the infrastructure so that the development is to some extent built out? Not, not the houses, maybe not the individual small roads that, that radiate out, but the main roads, and especially for me, Golden Sands, which I think is a problem, and I will say this, not just for the neighbors that are around it, but it's also a problem for the schoolchildren that have to walk down it without sidewalks. Do we have that within our purview to make those kinds of recommendations? And for the city engineer, is there a way of doing that?
So just from my perspective, I, the development agreement can certainly look to certain milestones. You know, Commissioner and Vice Chair Lann had sort of referenced previous iterations of that, this that had a lot more specificity in that capacity. So I do think a development agreement can certainly contemplate the timing of the bill out of infrastructure. I might look to our city attorney and perhaps our engineer in terms of how the skip or CFD relates to that, if that's the appropriate vehicle, or whether it's just the development agreement itself through the milestones. So that's.
Certainly, Mr. Hadwin, I'm happy to take that one. Madam Chair, members of the commission. Yes, if you'd like to make recommendations with respect to the development agreement itself, as Mr. Hadwin had mentioned, maybe adjustments to the schedule of performance or some sort of recommendation that certain infrastructure be completed by certain timeframes, you can certainly recommend that as part of the development agreement. With respect to the community facilities district and the skip financing, those are exclusively financing vehicles. CFD and tax-funded and skip usually fee-funded in some way. But again, those are financing vehicles. I've not seen either of those structured in a way, in my experience, for you included land use development-type conditions into those structures. They're financing only.
And then, the, the final question is the preparedness, the ability, the financial ability, the organizational ability of the applicant who wants to take this over to handle the project. And I do think, before we can look at what we might recommend, I think we need to know both your estimation and from them, what they think they can do.
Well, Madam Chair, I believe you can certainly, you know, make your thoughts known, and then the council will take those into consideration. I'm sure staff has been doing, you know, its due diligence, working with the successor owner, successor applicant to, you know, make sure that the city is entering into a good deal here, and that's going to be presented to council well. Anything I'm missing there, Mr. Hadwin?
Yeah, no, I would agree, and I would just add, you know, I think it's a question more appropriate for the applicant, but I will say that, you know, that being SunCal, they are a national developer with a track record of developing housing, certainly throughout much of California, and I believe many other parts of the country as well. So I can't speak specifically to their financing on this particular project and how they're structured. That's a good question for them, but I think they've demonstrated the ability to be financed elsewhere.
I mean, I don't think we want another failure. We don't want another failure.
Mr. Hadwin, can I add something to this? I'd like to add a little bit of information to what you just mentioned. You mentioned, you know, is there the ability for the commission to ask for, you know, certain spine roads to be built, maybe not anything else? That comes with a little bit of a, not really an issue, but it comes down to, you know, this big of a project typically, that's, the maps are done in phases. Phase one through nine, or however many phases they're planning on doing. And in order to build those spine roads, they're going to go across multiple, multiple phases of maps that haven't been recorded. So essentially, if you, if they did that, we would be asking them to record all of the maps at one time, the entire project being recorded at, at one time. And generally, they're not done that way. They're done in phases. I'm not saying that they couldn't. I'm just saying, in order to build those types of roads, like you're suggesting, the, all of those maps would have to be submitted, recorded, subdivision improvement agreements and bonds for each individual ones of those, in order, just in order to get those roads done, because those roads exist as lettered lots across each one of those maps.
This is just a question. I live in a development that had all of its spine roads built and its infrastructure put in, with open areas where the individual roads came later?
Yeah, and, and they just might be large pieces of land that haven't been subdivided, but maybe there was enough subdivision or enough segregation for the individual roads so that they could do that. And then later on, those larger chunks were then resubdivided into smaller pieces, kind of like Ascena and other, and other places. But you end up having this big, massive map recorded just so that you could do some of the infrastructure. And then later on, it was resubdivided into smaller pieces.
And that's something that we can ask to have done?
Yeah.
I mean, recording a subdivision map for the, I'm assuming something was recorded on this with the approvals, am I incorrect?
In 2016, the city council approved the tentative map, but a final map has not been recorded.
But it was a tentative map for the entire project?
Correct.
Correct.
So maybe that segues into a discussion with the applicant?
I think recording a final map for the entirety of the project may prove challenging, but I'm wondering if, to give us time to look at the mechanics, if you want to include as a recommendation, you know, that there be some construction of, of the road through the entirety of the project, we could certainly, by the time of the city council hearing, have a more formulative response on how that would work mechanically.
Are there more questions? I'm done. So at this point, I will open the public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes. Members of the public will then have three minutes, and you'll have three minutes for rebuttal, and then we will ask you to stay here to answer questions.
And planning commissioners, it's not, appreciate the opportunity to present our project here before you. First of all, I'd like to say that I want to-
Sorry, not, sorry to interrupt. Can you just state your name for the record?
Sir, I should know that. Fernando Dutra, PNG 1, as the applicant representative. I want to say that, that this is a complicated project, and it obviously, as you know, it's been dormant for a number of years. And so I especially appreciate the amount of work that staff has put into this and creating what I believe to be a report that is comprehensive, and I think certainly provides a narration for the project that we agree with. And so, we, we're excited about entering into this project. As you know, we have a reputation for being, you know, a well-funded and pretty experienced land development organization. We do that nationally, and we're happy to be in Palm Springs. As you know, we're at Ascena as well, and this is a project that we're looking forward to entering into. I've read the conditions, and I've listened to the testimony of, of the residents, as well as the questions, your well-thought-out questions. I can tell you that, relative to the open space funds, I'm in agreement. We, you know, the funds that, that we're going to contribute to this project, I'm in agreement that they should go to open space and allow for the robust open space that we think the project should have and the city should have as well. And so, that is not something that we would be against relative to some of the other questions. You know, I didn't hear anything that I thought was problematic. I'll say this, relative to the recording of, of the overall map, recording what we would consider to be an A map, and then you would have subsequent B maps, if you will. The, where that becomes problematic is in that, as a land development company or organization, our job is to come in here and create a vision for a community and then entitle it, and then look for partner merchant builders to come in here and develop the project based upon your vision as well, and what we have entitled. And so, to, to come in and, and create an overall A map and require the upfront infrastructure as the city engineer was articulating, that, that's a bit problematic, you know, and we would prefer to, to entitle it in the manner that we've, that we've, that we've requested here. I'll say this, that we do have the opportunity to, to think through the milestones, the appropriate milestones for the development, right? And so, your concern is that as we're, as we're entitling, as we're building, that A, we're paying our fees, as we've stipulated that we would, but also that we are providing the right amount of infrastructure to make the project safe, and also to comply with some of the residents' requirements. And I think that could probably baked, be baked into the development agreement if we sit down and, and think through the approvals, for example, the map approvals, and, and when we would be ready, if you will, to record a map. And I think all of the, all of the, let's call entitlements that you take, the required up to the development, up to the final map, I should say, I think we can bake in certain milestones for each one of the individual projects to accomplish prior to moving forward to another one, for example. And that's just sitting down with staff. And that's just sitting down with staff and looking at timing and, and, you know, the timing that we have, that we've established. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I'm happy to listen to ideas as well and, and talk through them. Want me to stand up here and answer questions or would you like me to go sit down?
I think we come back to questions for the applicant.
We'll come back.
Okay.
Either members of the public who wish to speak.
Madam Chair, he's already spoken.
I think you've already spoken. We don't usually. Thank you.
We do have one additional member. We did have one additional member who signed up to speak, who didn't speak earlier, Helen Dickerson. Are you here and wish to speak?
And there was a gentleman in the front row. Did you wish to speak? No? Oh, you don't have to sign the sheet. You can come up and speak.
Yes, certainly. My name is Michael Gageke, G-A-E-G-E-K-E. I reside at 2504 Northwest Whitewater Club Drive, the southern, southeast most, southern east most point of the triangle. So I'm like the, the last building, very last building. I'm the most exposed to, to all of the construction and the public space that is being planned. I wanted to make sure that people understand that there's a safety issue at the, at the site. There used to be two egresses for the whole development, for whole of Palm Springs Country Club, and one gate has been abandoned and is no longer accessible. And so we only end up having one egress for the whole development. One egress is not enough for that many residents. If there's an emergency, there's no way to get everyone out. And I believe that development like that should request, should require at least two entrances, like it used to be before.
I just want to, you, you live in one of the already developed?
Yes.
And the, the main entry, the main entry off of Farrell is still open, but the one you used to the south is, to Whitewater, it no longer functions?
Correct.
Okay.
It's an abandoned gate and, and I always was questioning it because there's always lots of debris from the wind and so on and it's never been taken away.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I live on Verona Road and my wall-
Please state your name.
My name is Juan Iglesias and I live on Verona Road and my wall divides the property Serena Park and, and I own. There is a, about 10 feet beyond my wall, there is a huge eucalyptus trees and the wind blows from, from their property towards my property and, and limbs and branches are always falling off and they've fallen on my wall, they've fallen on my gate. There's a little gate that I have and I have spoken to them by text and, and they have done some little work, but there's a lot of debris there all the time. Now there is a huge limb that's hanging on the tree that broke off because of the wind and it just hanging there. Anytime it's going to come down with a, a lot of wind that we have there and it's going to, if it falls down, it's going to fall on my property and my wall. And I, I addressed that to them and they haven't done anything about it. Okay?
And them, when you say them, you mean the current developer?
Yeah, Matthew Havrick, I forgot his name. And I don't know, I mean, I have pictures if you want to see them. You know, it's already beginning to dry out and, but it's just sitting there and any time now it's going to come down and it's, it's very heavy, it's about 3,000 pounds. Okay?
Are there other members of the public who wish to speak?
I may just poll our online visitors again. If, if any of you online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and I will allow you to talk. No one has their hand raised.
Mr. Dura, we're at rebuttal and if you'd come back for questions? Are there questions from the commission for the applicant?
Madam Chair, if I may also to address the residents, should we be approved and should we move forward? One of the tasks that I have here is to meet with, take the maintenance agreement, if you will, which we agreed to, and meet with all the necessary vendors and immediately implement the security program and the cleanup program so that we can clean that area up and make it presentable certainly for the, for the existing residents. So, so you know that we're, we're, we're serious about taking that maintenance program on and that's going to be the first task at hand, if you will, should we move forward with the project.
Commissioner Land?
I have a couple of questions regarding your willingness to do a couple of things. As staff addressed in the staff report, there are requirements for a development agreement that you provide a public benefit. And when we amend the development agreement, we have to revisit that and make sure that the, the benefits, that the, the city and the community are really getting its fair share. And one of the things that I'm probably most concerned about with the delay, with essentially pushing back by two years, is the fact that there are existing residents in and around and by in, I would mean those in the Golden Sands Mobile Home Park and around, meaning Four Seasons and the surrounding communities, that will be adversely impacted by having to wait two years longer to have improvements performed that were supposed to be performed under the agreement previously. And those have the potential for adversely impact their, in my opinion, impacting their property values. So I'm wondering if we can work out the details and the, the mapping and things like that, do you have the willingness, are you prepared to construct some of the infrastructure, in particular the park and probably the undergrounding in advance of when you would construct it if you simply went through phase by phase?
So Commissioner Aalian, did I pronounce that properly?
Aleian.
Aleian, God, I'm so sorry. People mess up my name all the time.
I respond to anything, so.
That's okay.
I'm used to it.
And it's Dutra, by the way. And so relative to the question, a lot of that is really due to the amount of time that we see and for entitlement processing, if you will, right? And if you look at that map, just as the city public engineer, the city engineer stated, it, it's really phased so that there is less impacts to the community and not going in there and tearing everything up all at once and, and if you will, impacting everything all at once. And so that's the reason why we phased it for two reasons. A, once again, because of, of the amount of time it takes to entitle a project and, and to go through that process. And we know that, you know, an entitlement of, of a, of a project or a map, you know, can take anywhere between six months to a year depending on, on the timing. And so that's one of the reasons why we've done that. Having said that, your concern relative to when the park gets built, for example, and when, let's call them backbone streets would be built sort of to accommodate, you know, a better thoroughfare, that I, I think would take a little bit more time to sit down and look at, at a development stage, at a mapping process and then overlay that on, you know, what we would consider to be a marketing program as well because we have to think in terms of when we, when we enter into the agreement with the city and we, we purchased the property from the existing seller, how long is that going to take before we're actually turning maps over to merchant builders? So there's a whole overlay of, of schedules that we'd have to go through to define, say for example, a master developer condition where you're building parks and you're building master developer infrastructure versus what we're doing now is we're mapping out these individual phases independently, if you will, and then saying that you can't start this phase until this phase is, let's call it for intent purposes, mostly complete, right? And that would be up to the city engineer to define the most, mostly complete portion of that phase. But that can also be baked into the development agreement as well when that starts through.
So there is no reason why the park couldn't be moved to phase one rather than phase two?
It is in phase one.
I think it is.
Is it now?
Park is in phase one.
If I recall, yeah.
It's, it's 1B, so it looks in order as two, but it's the same timing.
And the reason you want to build that with phase one is, is, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, for, it, you want to have, show a community that is ready to be lived in and certainly parks and schools and things of that nature give the sense-
That is what you want to do. What I want to do is look out for the residents, the existing residents of the surrounding community.
Yep.
Another question. We had a gentleman come up here and indicate that he was new to the area since the project was approved and he didn't know much about the project and wondered if there was material or if he would, if you'd be willing to answer questions. Are you willing to hold a meeting? And I think that's fair. There's probably a lot of, been a lot of turnover. This property, this project's been hanging around for a long time. Would you be willing to meet with the residents again to keep them apprised of what's involved in the project and when it's being done?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, what I recommend is part of, of our takeover of the project would be a public outreach plan also, periodic emails to, you know, the HOAs, letting them know the progress that we're making relative to maps or things of that nature. We have materials we can share, you know, for example, the map that you used up there as well and we have other materials we can share. But part of that is, I mean, look, my, my philosophy is to over communicate and, and so when you over communicate, I think to the extent that you can, you're resolving some of the, the fear, if you will, of what developer may or may not be doing. And so you can, you know, you can be assured that part of our mission is to over communicate and to become a community member, if you will, and, and be a good neighbor as well. And so we don't just talk to talk, we actually do it and we have, I think we have a pretty good, you know, history of doing so.
I'd like to follow up on that. Emails and mass communication is nice, but a face-to-face meeting with the residents where they can actually ask you questions and hear it from your voice or your representative, I think would do a lot more because we're all inundated with emails and texts and things and if you don't pay attention, it's gone.
I agree. And so, you know, I'm, I'm really, I'm readily available, you know, to, for meetings, like everyone else, I agree, you know, I, too many emails, you get inundated with, with emails. But I will say this, I think it's important to do both, right? I think you can do both and have effective communication because some, you know, having that information that you can draw back on and being able to download, for example, a map and have it electronically versus having it on paper, but I think you can do both. So I appreciate that comment. I prefer to have face-to-face as well.
Thank you.
Maybe you want to go ahead and put your cell phone number on the public record?
Unfortunately, it probably already is. But yeah, I, we, like I said, over communicating, I think is, you know, that's just the best way, the best process and the doing it, doing it physically and in person, I agree, is the best way to do it, but follow-up emails are good as well.
I, I have a question. We had strongly recommended that Francis Drive not be in emergency access, something that I will throw into the, if, whatever actions we take. This is a very long spine road and I've looked at the, the impact studies that have been done and adding, I think adding Francis Drive as an entry point would only take about 12% of the traffic that will come from the development, but it allows three ingress and egress points. Do you have a problem with that?
I don't. I'd like to study it with staff and sit down with the city engineer and walk through what the impacts might be, but on the surface, no. But if you don't mind, I'd like to study it with staff and our engineer as well. You know, I think it's important that if I'm going to make that kind of a decision, that I look at all of the impacts from a engineering standpoint as well.
I mean, it would be something that we would recommend to council. We've recommended to council before when we looked at all the impacts back in 16. The, I understand that you don't want to act as a master developer in this instance where you're building out the, building out the infrastructure in, it, I think that creates, that creates some problems. It creates problems with some of the deliverables like CV link, which was, and I think a schedule for CV link is really important to have to know when that'll go through. The way you're looking at developing this in increments means that all of the impacts are on the Whitewater side of the development for the first many, for most of the project because the portion, the further portions are the ones that go down to Sunrise and along the spine to Sunrise. And that's one of the areas of concern that I have is that only one, one side of this large neighborhood gets all of the construction impacts. You, am I, am I correct in understanding that the way you've sequenced this is it starts, it starts at the Whitewater side, starts at the south and the very-
At the bottom.
The very last portion that you would handle is the portion that spills out next to Sunrise?
Correct.
Okay. The, the other question I have is regarding trees. I've heard the gentleman talk about his trees and I know that we have, and it's a question for staff too because they didn't put that in their, their requirements for property maintenance, but the tamarisk trees have been incredibly invasive on people's property and that's something that we wanted the old developer to take care of and I don't think it's been completely taken care of, but their roots are intrusive and they go into people's property and removing those as part of your cleanup, do you have a problem with doing that?
No, we, as a matter of fact, that, one of the tasks that we immediately want to, to perform is to have, meet with the landscape company out there and look at the trees that are problematic. I think we'd have to walk with staff or some of the owners and identify which trees they are. As you know, trees can be a sensitive subject. Some people want trees to be left in place and some people want them to be removed. And so we want to make sure that we're addressing the tree situation properly.
I'm mainly talking about the tamarisk trees, which are, which have a, a different history in this property than, than say an Elmer, a Pelleverdi.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sensitive to tree removals, so.
We are too. Other, other questions? There being none, thank you very much and this comes to the commission. And my understanding is that our role in this is advisory so that we are making recommendations to city council but not decisions. I'm a little disappointed to start off, just to say with the, the fees that they're still going out such a long time period. I don't know if anybody else has that concern because they've been postponed since 16 and we're starting in 24 and they would be fully paid up what year now if things moved according to the schedule?
The last payment would be November of '27 and the first payment would be due no later than June of next year.
So paid in, paid over three years?
Yes, that's correct.
Two years, actually.
Sorry, two years.
You want to go forward?
Well, I was going to just, in response to your question, from my perspective, we have a new developer that's coming to the table and I think we've got to respect that issue and the fact that the previous developer wasn't able to follow through with the project. We had several years of COVID, as we all know, which is perhaps part of the reason why the original developer fell by the wayside, but the, I think what's being proposed with the timing is actually pretty robust. And we can't fault this new developer that's stepping to the table for things that he wasn't involved in for the last six or seven years. So in that respect, I don't, myself, I don't have a problem with the timing.
It wasn't anything I was going to push, I just wanted to say it. At some point, you just need to voice disappointment.
When I was running for city council, I spoke to some of the residents, and that was four years ago, and it's dismaying to say they're still looking at this blighted, dried-out grass, it isn't always maintained, it's a fire hazard, so the, more quickly this could get done, I'm sure is probably the primary concern for all the people sitting here.
I'll make some suggestions for things that I think need to be in it. I do think that two gates need to be open right now for the existing residents, and that the gate on the south in the maintenance plan needs to be included in the maintenance plan, so that the, the residents that are currently living in the Whitewater section, I think it's, is my correct, the condo section, have two ways of exiting and entering the project, and that that should be there, and that the trees should be a portion of what's in the maintenance plan.
On the gate issue, I think that we would need the support of the Palm Springs Country Club HOA as an organization. I don't know that that obligation can fall to this developer, so is there gate, and I believe there's a history of conversation there that we would want to look into, but I don't know.
I think that's a staff obligation.
Yeah, so we would do that work.
Hearing that they don't have two ways of getting, because I, when I, when I visited it in 15 and 16, they had two ways of exiting. And, and it's just not, it doesn't strike me as safe not to have that. So I think working with the country club, but also working, if it, if the old developer has blocked that as an entry to keep people from coming in, they still need a way to, for people to exit. And I would like to recommend that Francis Street, that we change the language that says that Francis Drive, again, a recommendation to city council, that it, it should not be an emergency access only, but it should be a third point of access. I would like to recommend that they find a way for Golden Sands to be improved beginning of the project, even though that's an end stage. I think it can be separate from the, the houses that they're building in that section, but improving that, that driveway and adding sidewalks should be something that in this new agreement should be a portion of it. I don't know if any of it.
I certainly share your concern, Golden Sands Drive is in no way reflective of the city's standards for street maintenance or construction or anything, or for safety for the kids who are walking to catch a school bus. There are, I think there are tamarisk trees along there that regularly drop large limbs and are a nuisance, as well as potentially a danger or a fire hazard. I think that, in general, as so often happens, we don't have any good alternatives. The current property owner and developer is unable to perform, that much is absolutely clear, and the surrounding community really wants this to be wrapped up and done, and they're tired of having to put up with it, it's an eyesight and a nuisance, and it doesn't enhance their property values. But the new property owner, or the buyer, as Commissioner Miller pointed out, is, we can't beat them about the head and shoulders for not having done anything for the last few years, because they haven't owned the property, we have to give them a reasonable amount of time to perform. That being said, I would look towards having conditions or doing what we can to make sure that the community is protected. If we can't get things built more quickly, there are some things that we can do that would help the community. When we talk about the additional $700,000 and the fact that it's been since a long time and that may not represent a fair enough increase of a contribution towards open space, I think we could look at something like that, that doesn't require acceleration of the building, and certainly, I do believe that we can at least, I'll ask the city engineer, is, Golden Sands Drive must be mapped. If we can get the transfer in ownership and get the improvements done there sooner rather than later, rather than at the end of the project, I think that that would help the community in general. And other things that concern me are particularly the maintenance agreement. There have been agreements in place for years, and they just don't get, for whatever reason, a host of reasons, they don't get enforced, the security cameras don't work, or they fall, or disappear, and, and graffiti, if you've got a month to clean it up, our city crews get out and clean up public graffiti in a day. So I think that there are some of the, the timeframes on the maintenance response and the obligations that can be accelerated. I think probably stabilizing the soil once a year, and the new age of windy conditions over silt from the tropical storm Hillary, or the not-quite-tropical storm Hillary, are going to make it appropriate to either restabilize more frequently, or at least have an inspection to determine if restabilization is necessary on a more frequent basis. And I think other things that we can do, there are, I was out there the other day, and there are, I don't know, lots of palm trees that have just been beheaded and left standing there as a blight on the open desert, which would be, just plain open undeveloped land would be a step up from what we've got out there now. And I think whatever we can do to both enhance the requirements in the maintenance agreement, and secondly, to have teeth in enforcement, would benefit the community, the surrounding community, and the future community, and that we should implement those, or require those.
I think the, the agreement you presented to us is too loose. I would, I would also like you to continue to work with the city engineer and look at when it's possible, even if they're doing it not as a master developer, but some, some priority on developing the spine roads and having a date for CV Link to be able to use the roads. This has held up the development of CV Link for years, and the community doesn't want it to go along the wash in, in that area, so it was supposed to go through this development, and there has to be a way that there's a timing, a timing and a delivery on that, and that should be one of your, one of, opening up the road and, and the creation of CV Link should be a delivery item.
And, Madam Chair, I'm not hearing a lot of people jump in on this, but I'm wondering how we go about getting to a document and concrete recommendations that we can forward to the city council in a timely manner. Some of these things, like better defining the milestones, making sure that they're realistic and tying them into things that are actually mapped or recorded, things like that, I'm comfortable giving general direction to staff and asking, and making our recommendation conditioned upon staff working out something acceptable to them with the developer, is that what we're looking at doing?
Do we have one meeting left before you go to city council with this?
No, no, this is, the recommendation to city council should be made in a motion tonight.
And is it something on the details of which Commissioner Layen and I could work out with you?
I think that we would be happy to draft the language based on the direction of the full planning commission tonight, and then we could share that in a draft form and make sure that it's reflective, that's probably the way that we could do that.
So let me go through the items that we've mentioned so far and see if we are in agreement. The first is the, the maintenance agreement, and what I've heard in the maintenance agreement is more teeth, including the trees, dates, and also possibly more stabilizing, stabilizing the sand and the soil, if necessary, more frequently than once a year. Is there anything else?
I think, I would say that the requirement that the security cameras be maintained in working order, or be replaced, repair or replaced within one week from receiving notice from the city that they're not working, and graffiti removal, I would say, be performed within seven days.
And trash.
And trash.
When I went out there, there were mattresses, I mean, not recently, but it was a collection of things that had lived there for a long time.
And that dead trees and dead tree limbs be removed.
And the trees.
Again, I'd say within, you know, and that maybe two weeks of receiving direction from the city.
And that they be, the trees be evaluated within one month of them taking over the property, and a schedule for remove, any necessary removal be prepared and done within four months.
To me, that sounds reasonable, but I'm not doing the work.
And Mr. Dura is here, if he's concerned with anything we're raising, I would welcome him back up.
No concerns, Madam Chair, but I think the maintenance agreement as it's written now does allow for cameras to be maintained, it does allow for regular maintenance, if you will, to be performed once a month, as a matter of fact, and the trees, it does allow for tree removals and cleanup as well, but we're happy to, you know, review that and add language to it, make it more robust, to the, to the point where you're more comfortable with the, how tight it needs to be, but you should be assured that our intention is to, is to clean the site up and make it presentable, because that, it's a representation of who we are as a company as well, so.
Thank you. And then on, on milestones, possibly rewrite the mile, rewrite the milestones, make sure that "ready to record" is the right language, or we should have alternate language, and in terms of milestones, I would still like to see a milestone for Golden Sands Road and the park, and a milestone for when, when the spine road would be planned, planned and possibly built out. Yes?
You also mentioned, I think it was on Golden Sands Road, accelerating pedestrian sidewalks, the development.
Including pedestrian sidewalks and accelerating the build-out of Golden Sands Road, including what they've agreed to do with the neighboring HOA, putting that closer to the front of the schedule, along with the park.
Just to, just to clarify, that's the portion of Golden Sands that accesses the, the development that's built only, not the entire roadway?
It accesses the development that's built and also the trailer park.
Right, okay, so it's a relatively small portion of Golden Sands.
It's a small portion of Golden Sands, but from the trailer park to Sunrise.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, just if I could add, the, when the project was approved in 2016, I believe there, that was a requirement that they build at least a temporary road to access the first phase to handle all construction traffic from the north entry, to reduce truck and large vehicles from entering the Whitewater Club access point.
So, so if there's a temporary road, that satisfies what I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about there being access so that not all of the construction traffic fall on the Whitewater side?
And that entitlements have specific requirements that speak exactly to what is required for construction in terms of timeframes, access, and things like that.
And, obviously, that the, the developer is still responsible for the public benefit portions that were identified originally, and the only one that I'd suggest changing is creating a third access point at Francis Drive. And this was a recommendation of the previous planning commission, and it's because it's a very long spine road, and it actually would distribute the traffic more fairly, but would, it would only take 12% of the traffic, but it would distribute it more fairly along the neighborhoods that will be impacted by traffic. And I don't know if there's any disagreement with that. Else?
Are you getting ready to call for a road?
I'm getting very ready to call this a motion. Who wants to make it?
I, I will make the motion for recommendation to the city council of approval of the First Amendment to the amended and reinstated development agreement, number one. And I do want to just add for the record that during my time in, as a resident in Palm Springs, I have at times been both a permanent and a temporary employee of the city, and in my capacities, I have met with representatives of the current property owner and representatives of the proposed, or legal counsel for the buyers, and that I do have no financial interest in the outcome of the decision or recommendation made tonight.
I should also say that because I live at Ascena, I have experience with SunCal and also with Mr. Dura, who I've met with on Ascena-related issues, they have, they've taken over as the declarant and general property, the property developer for the remaining sections of Ascena, so I have seen, I have met with them. And on a personal note, I've also seen that they're capable of quickly mobilizing.
I'll second that, if that was a motion.
That is. Any comments on the motion? Do you have enough?
I was gonna just check with staff and see, I think we were looking at the minutes of the last meeting and realized sometimes we need to restate the motion or make sure it's clear.
I see many, many notes between the three of us, we have the video, we will certainly draft something that we hope captures this discussion, and as I mentioned, we'll circulate it and make sure that we fill in any gaps before it's finalized for the council.
Can you call the roll?
Vice Chair Layen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wermick?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Best of luck to you at city council, and I hope this works out for the neighborhoods. And moving right along, does anybody need a break before we, so we will take a, do you need a 10 minutes? A five-minute break? Meeting, I'm calling us back to order. The planning commission is back on. We have no unfinished business. We are at new business, which is item 4A, the Department of Special Program Compliance for Discussion Regarding Locations of Cannabis Temporary Events. Staff report, please.
Wermick, tonight's, we are engaging in a conversation to discuss potential locations for cannabis temporary events. We will be returning to, with a proposed ordinance for recommendation to council for these locations. So our cannabis temporary event was permitted in December of 2019 with the adoption of ordinance 2005, which established the code section for cannabis temporary events in the city of Palm Springs. They're multi-day events. They do allow consumption and sale of cannabis. They can range anywhere from one day to four days, and they are hosted by event organizers, and then the event organizers pull a permit for the specific event they wish to host. When we did initially adopt this ordinance, the ideal location that we had proposed was the convention center, and that was the only location that we had proposed at the time. After the adoption, though, we quickly learned that that location was excluded due to the tribe's prohibition of cannabis activity on their land. So that left us without a location. Quickly thereafter, we did have COVID occur, and that put the cannabis events completely halted. We didn't discuss them. We knew that we couldn't move forward with them at that time. What we did, now that we are proceeding to, in an attempt to identify some location, is we engaged a nine-person work group to assist in identifying potential locations. The work group consisted of nine cannabis professionals from the Coachella Valley. We did not have anyone who was opposed to cannabis, so we realized after the fact that that did harm us in the discussion, because everybody in our group wants cannabis. So there was no, no discussion of any issues that occur with the proposed location. So we did go to the Parks and Recs Commission for feedback on the parks location, since we know that one is a very sensitive subject. I do want to point out that we do have some challenges in identifying these locations. The first is that when the state initially allowed for these cannabis events, they did not allow them to be held at any location within any local jurisdiction. They had to be held at District Agriculture Association or at a county fair locations. We do not have either of those in the city. They, we do have an additional layer of issues with locations, and that is that we do have a prohibition by our tribe that does not allow it to occur on any tribal land. And anyone who saw the map that we attached to the staff report, it's kind of a checkerboard. So there is some challenges. In fact, one of the proposed locations, we got feedback from the planning director of the tribe, and it is now not an option because it is on tribal land, and I will discuss that when we go over those locations. The last challenge that we have is odor. Where there's smoke, there's odor, and that includes vaping. I know we had, like I said, we had a very pro-cannabis work group, and they really wanted to explore other areas of consumption that would be permissible at less odor implications, but even vaping does have those. And we have our odor consultant here to discuss the challenges with odor control at these types of events, and what options the city would have should they wish to proceed. I do want to point out that with the, when we return with the ordinance for the recommendation, you can either choose to recommend all the locations, some of the locations, or none of locations. So there is an option to recommend that we rescind the temporary events from our code and no longer allow them. So that is an option as well that you can recommend. There are different types of cannabis events. There's conferences, conventions, exhibitions and trade shows, and festivals. I did go in the staff report and defined them further, but they're not limited to just one type, and each one brings its own set of customers that it draws in. Conferences tend to be more educational, festivals tend to be more of a party, a celebration. The venues that our group suggested were the city parks. They did recommend all of the parks, however, there was a stronger argument for the downtown park, because there is no playground equipment there. Our work group, as a whole, were not overly supportive of the parks, but they were adamant they did not want them held at any parks with playground equipment. So that is something that they were, they did voice their concern, and they also were concerned with regard to the odor and the impact on neighboring businesses and residences. There was also additional venues. They had suggested the ability to close off roads, so just being able to close a road and host an event in that section. Any outdoor streets, they also named some specific streets. They'd like to have them in industrial zones, utilizing vacant warehouses. The Palm Springs Surf Club is recommended. Estate homes and hotels that offer a complete buyout for the event were also recommended. With regard to the location that is not viable, that would be East Arenas Road between Indian Canyon Drive and South Kaia and Celia, because that is on a latte land. So that location would not be up for consideration. I do have an email to the state right now for further clarification, because one of their restrictions is that a cannabis temporary event cannot be held at a premises that holds a license for alcohol sales. So that would exclude the Palm Springs Surf Club. So if that is indeed confirmed, that location or any other location, such as a hotel that has a license to sell alcohol, would not be permissible. So that is something that I'm waiting for further information, and when we return, I will have that for you. If we should make a recommendation to council, the planning commission can also put additional restrictions on these events. They can limit the number of events that are held in the city. That can be done either quarterly or on a yearly basis. The state requires it, but we really would drive home the, no cannabis consumption to be visible by the public. And then we can also ask for mandatory setbacks, and they can be stricter than the, than the typical setbacks of 500 feet from neighborhoods, restaurants and bars, and local cannabis businesses. So we can ensure additional safety provisions for the community with additional restrictions for these events. With that, I'd like to hand this over to our odor control consultant, because he's going to discuss the challenges with odor control.
Can we just ask you a few questions? I know I have one. Does anybody else? Commissioner Layan, go ahead.
The, the list of parks, did I understand you to say that one of these is taken out of consideration because it is actually on tribal lands?
No, that was the street closure.
That's not a reason, okay. But I'm confused, there are a number of them here that I recognize that do have playground equipment.
Correct. So that, the request to not have it at any park with playground equipment was from Parks and Rec Commission. Our group did recommend all of them, and I just included them, so we have them on the table.
So the only one that may not have it, and it may have it, is the downtown park, which actually has a water, a splash pad for children.
Correct.
So maybe eliminating all parks.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And my, my question is actually kind of a follow-up to their question regarding the parks. Did the Parks and Recreation Commission differentiate playground equipment at all, or distance from playground equipment? Because a couple of these parks are quite large, and, and I, Demuth and Sunrise, for instance, and I would think that an event could be located and planned such that it was several hundred feet from any playground equipment. And so I'm curious if they still would have had an issue if that kind of...
The general consensus, if there's playground equipment at the park, they did not want to have an event there.
Okay.
Regardless of setbacks.
And that is something that the city council could choose to ignore, I guess, or to place a distant separation, for instance.
Correct.
Because I think that's a very limiting sort of position to take. I understand where they're coming from. They don't want this activity in close proximity to children, but like I said, at least two of these parks are quite large and probably could be scheduled to, to be far distant from the children's play equipment.
Mr. Murphy?
From the list...
From the list, just to clarify, it seems like the only two that are left for consideration are industrial zones and maybe estate homes and hotels.
Correct. And the hotels...
Those are the last two that are standing.
The hotels would be subject to whether or not they hold a license to sell alcohol. And again, I'm waiting for that confirmation from the state.
Which hotel venues do. So you really have industrial zones that are left standing, from what I can tell.
Yeah.
Right?
If that's what you choose to recommend, yes.
Some of the other cities that you gave a graph for in the end use a tented area. Did you guys consider a tented area to help curtail the smoke?
Yes, and our odor control consultant will be speaking with regard to the challenges of tented consumption areas.
And did I understand that these, our current ordinance allows these events to be up to four days?
That's the state. The state allows them to be from one to four days.
Okay. And our local ordinance doesn't have a prohibition or any limitation on that?
We would be consistent with the state. So one to four days.
Okay.
The Desert Sun today had a fairly large article about cannabis in locations that serve food or liquor. And that, so is food also prohibited?
Currently, it is. There is an assembly bill that has been proposed that would allow cannabis catering. It would allow cannabis to be served paired with food. However, that has not passed. The last version was vetoed by Governor Newsom, and there is discussion that this one may not make it past his desk again. So we don't know yet. It's still being considered.
So potentially places that serve food but don't have an alcohol license. I'm wondering if we have any in Palm Springs. We have an awful lot of alcohol licenses. So, okay. If, I think at this point, no more questions. If the odor consultant wants to come up and answer some questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioner. My name is Jay Tackus. I'm founder and CEO of 15,000 Incorporated, a mechanical engineering firm based in Northern California. I'm also CEO of ACOM, the American Council on Odor Mitigation. We publish national standards on odor mitigation for cannabis specific. I do not have a presentation. I'm slightly hoping that the challenges of odor mitigation outdoors are rather apparent to everybody, but I'm more than happy to answer questions. There are examples of this activity throughout the state. You have some unique challenges here within the city of Palm Springs that are not the same as other locations where these events occur.
Can you mitigate odors outdoors?
Feasibly, probably not. Day-to-day is a good example of what Mother Nature is. You have a prevailing wind. Any odor mitigation, as you folks have seen in the past, where we're inside of a building requires us manipulating the air, which means manipulating the odor. Turpines and in general vapor and smoke are thermally buoyant, so depending on the temperature and density of the air is where the smoke goes. So in order to control it, we would need to control the humidity, the temperature, the density of the air. Or we would, what other areas do is they provide just massive setbacks, or they have facilities that are constructed specific for this, like fairgrounds, which is where they generally most happen.
And if you put this in a warehouse, what would be the impact for the adjacent, if there were adjacent uses, one that has obviously not been retrofitted to handle cannabis?
Yeah, the existing regulations inside the city, for the city of Palm Springs, require that there be no objectionable cannabis odor at the property line. So we've taken great care to ensure that we do not have any objectionable odor at the building line. We've used that as our line of defense. The property line is relatively irrelevant. So we've seen the effect of not having the odor mitigation in buildings right now with cultivation. Some properties in town have had some problems over the years that may or may not be here anymore. So it's already a challenge to do it in buildings that where we are intending to manipulate the odor airstream and to mitigate the odor. So I would say you would, when you have the transmission of people just walking in and out of the building, in general, most buildings are positively pressurized because there's requirements for bringing in outside air throughout the state. So in general, you're just going to push odor out of any building that you generated in. That would be the natural flow of any airstream in a building.
So no odor control outside and probably no odor control if it's inside a building that hasn't been retrofitted for cannabis?
Yeah, it would be very difficult. In our world, in my world, we have an axiom that is the solution to pollution is dilution, which really isn't the solution. The solution is get rid of it. But the reality is, you know, we've addressed that, we've addressed it that way with the city of Palm Springs. Even inside of a building, we mandate a seven-to-one dilution ratio for any discharged air that is positively pressurized and containing any cannabis. And that's only after it's been treated with activated carbon. So we've taken great care of this. So I would not be able to stand here and reliably tell you you could mitigate odor in a building that has not been prepared to do so, and you would struggle to control the air streams outside, for sure.
I was going to ask, and you touched on it a little bit, is there any distance, a number in feet, that would mitigate the odor in an outside environment?
Yeah, offhand, I don't know. I could certainly do some research and take a look at it, but you're really going to be fighting a prevailing airstream, and this would be a good example of it, is, you know, 1,000 feet downwind of this airstream is probably just going to contain whatever odor was entered into it. And it's going to take longer to dilute when you have a more primary-style airstream. If you have a more kind of static, kind of stratified airstream, it would dilute easier a little bit, be less directed. I can't recommend the necessary footage, but I would say that you would probably, you'd probably want to be so far away that you couldn't visibly tell you they were smoking cannabis.
Excuse me. In your professional opinion, it seems like we painted ourselves into a corner. You cannot use a place that has an alcohol license. That pretty much eliminates everything in Palm Springs. Warehouses don't have any air filtering procedures, so that eliminates any buildings. Hotels, resort homes, all have neighbors, wind blows. So in your opinion, where could this even take place in Palm Springs?
I do not have a photographic memory of the inventory of properties for the town, but where other cities and jurisdictions do this, you're looking at buildings that stand alone within county or city properties, be it fairgrounds, be it large industrial areas. Offhand, I know that the north of 10 is kind of the overlay zone for cannabis projects and where the impact is less sensitive in that area than it is in other areas. So that would be my first guess, just off the cuff, would be kind of in the M1 overlay zone.
And what about golf courses? Like the city golf course in the middle of the city?
They sell alcohol.
Oh, they sell alcohol. Okay, well, that takes care of that.
What about the Air Museum?
They sell.
They sell. And they wouldn't do that with airplanes. They'd be too careful.
Yeah, and just locally, up in Northern California, in Santa Rosa, we're not super happy to losing the Emerald Cup to LA, but this is part of why, is because, you know, we just don't, that was outgrowing the facility where it used to occur.
What is the Emerald Cup?
Emerald Cup is an annual cannabis festival. Started out in Humboldt County in the Emerald Triangle, and it migrated down to Santa Rosa. It was there for about 30 years or so and is just now over in LA because it just outgrew its facility. And that was on a county property at the fairgrounds in Santa Rosa. So there are festivals that do occur, but they, and I've been to several of them, I've been to MJ Biz in Sacramento, that's a non-consumption event, you know, been to several of the cannabis festivals, and they are specific, you know, festival properties. It would be, I heard you guys talking about parks, and just as a citizen, that was my eyebrow raised when you started talking parks and playground equipment. My eyebrow just popped up a little bit, so.
I'm going to demonstrate just how hopelessly square I am. When we're concerned about odors, and I know there's vaping, and I don't really know what it is, but there's, anytime I can smell odor, does that mean I'm being subjected to potentially being intoxicated by the second-hand smoke?
I am definitely not a doctor, so I will give you a citizen evaluation of that. I would say generally no, that, you know, casual passive second-hand smoke of any nature is not necessarily carcinogen or intoxicating. Consistent persistent use and exposure, which is why we've changed state laws for bars and smoking indoors, that does lead to, you know, negative effects of consistent and persistent exposure. Vaping, though, if I walked by and hit a vape pen and you got hit with a cloud of mild smoke, I would doubt that you would feel the effects of it. But if you were walking around in a cannabis event, probably.
Okay, and if I'm a small child with teeny-tiny sensitive lungs, am I likely to?
If you're far away and it's diluted, no. But if you're close and it's consistent, yeah, there's a significant chance, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add, in general, you can't go too far wrong by mimicking the smoking laws.
I'm wondering...
Thank you. Now I'm cool because I know lots of things.
I don't know if that's...
I mean, some other properties that come to mind, but I don't know logistically if this makes any sense. We have so many large open wash areas that obviously, I mean, obviously you can't hold a festival in a bunch of soft sand, but I would think that there might be locations in the wash areas, and I don't know, ownership-wise, who exactly that is.
Army Corps of Engineers.
So that may complicate matters.
The water agencies.
But I'm trying to come up with a solution of suggestions because I think this is a cool idea.
Yeah, I agree. I'm super pro-cannabis, super pro-events.
But I don't know if it's right for Palm Springs, just because of the way we lay and the fact that we've got housing all the way up to our southern boundary. There's no, there's sort of no site that's, you could get the northwest prevailing wind and blow it up to the mountain where it might not hurt anybody. We just aren't laid out like that.
I think the question, and the surf club kind of comes to mind, if the surf club, which has a liquor license, could do it if they made it exclusive and didn't serve liquor or food, then you might do that. I can also see potentially in the middle of the city golf course, not in the city golf club where they're bringing alcohol. Those are the only two places.
And I am waiting for clarification because the way that the state regulations read is it cannot be held at any premises that holds a license. So it doesn't, you can't serve alcohol, period, with cannabis. So it wouldn't be allowed anyways. But the clarification that we're seeking is with that excluded venue, such as the surf club, that holds that license. Because the way it reads, it would. But I am seeking that clarification. And when we come back with the ordinance, and like I said, that ordinance can be a recommendation of some of the locations, none of the locations, any new locations you propose, or the recommendation can be that we simply repeal that code section and do not permit the events in the city.
Mr. Murphy?
I have a question about the demand for this kind of event. Have you done any research to understand what is the interest level in the Palm Springs area for this?
We've had a request to have cannabis special events. We've had two requests in the last five years. So there's not a huge request.
Two requests by two different people?
By one event organizer who wanted to have it at their event. Our work group expressed a lot of interest, but like I stated, they are from the cannabis industry, so they are very pro-cannabis. So they did, they did really want to push that. One of our work group members is actually a cannabis special event promoter, and we had two event organizers on the work group. So of course, they expressed a lot. But with regard to actual requests to the city, this has been on our books since we adopted it with the ordinance in 2019, and since that time, we've only had two requests. So there hasn't been a huge demand for it.
So to me, that kind of begs the question of why are we spending a lot of time and resources even discussing it?
I think it's worth discussing it. I just think we've come up with, I probably, I would hold out for no parks because even the downtown park has a water play area for children, and children actually use that park a lot. So no parks, no streets. And probably answering the question with hotels or the water park is if they hold those licenses, if they could do that.
When we return with the ordinance, we can have that information and determine if we can make that recommendation at that time.
Because I think that's probably the only outlets that we have. And I would say the golf course, if they hold, if they held, that could be a nice location for an outdoor festival.
Large enough, yeah.
If the liquor license issue and the golf course didn't want to have golf on a specific day, and they would forego it, yeah.
You know, so, and I don't know how the city would feel about it, but the city owns a lot of property around the airport, and some of it is vacant, big, huge parking lots, some of it are warehouses. And I just wonder if there isn't a site there that you could look at.
We can look at that when we return, see if there are some viable locations.
I have a quick, why no food service?
That's in our state regulations, and I'm not certain why that was included. I know that it has been discussed, and like I said, there is that current assembly bill that would allow it. The last version was vetoed, though, so we don't know where this one's going. If it's passed, then it would be allowed to have food.
Do we have, have we given enough information?
Yes, so from...
I've got one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I've got one more question. On the application that's in our package from the city, I get to the last page, and it, in bold letters, and I didn't see this when I first read through it, "Outdoor cannabis consumption is restricted to edibles. No outdoor smoking or vaping." Is that going to be a restriction, if anything goes?
This was the one, the original draft, so...
That doesn't make sense.
We can remove that. Well, initially, like I said, initially, the location, and this was back in 2019, we had talked about was the Palm Springs Convention Center, and we were not looking at having anything other than edibles and topicals. Nothing, no smoking.
Okay.
And with regard to the Air Museum, we did inquire with them, and they don't allow smoking, period. So it just wasn't a location that went very far with the group.
Also tribal land considerations around the airport.
Pardon? I would assume that there aren't any hotels that allow smoking.
It's on a case-by-case basis. We do have some of our smaller boutique hotels that do.
I think Commissioner Rotman had a great idea, at least to look into, is whether or not any airport area sandlots, there are a number of them, whether it's the parking or, there's also areas on the north end of the runways off of Feral Drive that are pretty open, and I don't think any of the pilots in the planes would smell any of the smoke as they're taking off.
There are at least portions of the airport that are tribal, so I think certainly we could look at it, but we'd have to sort of overlay that.
And we do have to also, when it comes to the airport and any land associated with the airport, is it still federally prohibited? So we can't do it on any land that has any federal ties.
Okay, that settles the airport.
So we will return then, and we will look for additional locations, and then I should have that clarification with regard to the alcohol licensing. And if that is not, if we can proceed with the alcohol license, then we will have the water park and the hotels and the golf courses.
Thank you.
Let me ask, did staff want, was staff looking for any sort of consensus or anything from the commission other than comments?
I think that, I think this was really just a point of discussion and some direction, and as Veronica said, we'll return, they'll return with something more formulated.
Okay.
We will be looking for action.
It's education for us when it comes back. Okay. Okay, item under new business, item 4B, discussion of the draft environmental impact report for the Palm Springs Fulfillment Center. And we've lost our public... for the Palm Springs Fulfillment Center. And we've lost our public.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Chair Womackin. Commissioners, the draft EIR for the Palm Springs Fulfillment Center was delivered to you last week. It looks like this. You all have a big binder full of information and good readable material. So the proposal, just to give you a little bit of background, is a 739,000 high cube, two-story warehouse facility at the north end of town in the M2 zone. The M2 zone is a byright site. If you remember, the Planning Commission several years back had designated this as the area where these types of uses would be permitted, as a byright with a major development permit. So in the draft EIR, we would like the commission, over the next couple of weeks, to focus on the executive summary, the impact analysis. And in the report, there's a table, Table 1.3, which lists all the mitigating, monitoring, and the reporting program. It's a very simple chart to read. It lists what the item is that was analyzed, and if it has any significance, if it has any impact, and then the mitigation measures. I didn't include it here, but it is in the book, and it's very useful to get a summary fairly quickly. Then Chapter 4.7 is greenhouse gas, and then Transportation, 7.13. And then the appendix, which is this big binder, has the full traffic report, noise impacts, lighting, all the reports that were used to devise the draft EIR is online on the Planning Department webpage. So our next steps is, we're currently in a 45-day public comment period. It ends on June 17th, so the public, all the different agencies, different labor groups, all will provide us with letters and comments that we will respond to when we develop the final EIR. We'll publish the final EIR, and we're anticipating a planning commission hearing on July 24th. At that hearing, you will consider the adoption of the final EIR, and then the major development permit, and then findings of overriding consideration. So if you look in that table that I mentioned earlier, there are two portions of the EIR that cannot be mitigated. They have significant impacts, and those are greenhouse gas emissions and transportation. So the planning commission can consider adopting the final EIR and findings of what's called overriding considerations. And this statement is a written document that explains why there are beneficial aspects of the proposed project that outweighs the unavoidable adverse environmental impacts for both those two items, greenhouse gas and transportation. This requires the planning commission to recognize that all impacts can be mitigated, and the project will have a benefit to the city financially by providing economic viability. So there is a mechanism in SEQA to allow you to override and determine that, because the project has significant impacts, you can override that and approve it. The planning commission has done this in the past. The Spring Shopping Center had overriding considerations, and you see how that's developed over the years and the economic viability we've had from the Home Depot and all those businesses there. So, Chair, that concludes my report. We were thinking we would have just this presentation, but if you have any questions, and also, my colleague, our personal planner here is my helper in this whole environmental journey, and he may want to say a few things.
And just, if I might, before you all jump in, a couple of things here, and I think Glenn has covered it well. We are not at the point of making a decision on this project, right? So really, the goal here is, is there sufficient information in this DEIR that will inform you at the time this does come before you for a planning commission and all 2,700 pages of glory, to make an informed decision, right? So if there are things that you feel need to be focused on or looked at, any level of high-level or in-depth comment would be helpful to take back to the consultants, so that they are looking at that, revising the EIR before it comes back to you all, and addressing that in the response to comments. So that's kind of the first thing. The second point I just want to make, and this is really in response to public comments that we've been receiving and hearing, is, as a matter of policy, changes were made by the city council in 2022 to allow warehouses and logistics centers of this scale in this location. So the city council did affirmatively make those changes two years ago to allow large-scale warehouses and logistics centers in a small area north of I-10 centered on Indian Canyon, up to, I believe, five stories, or even taller in some specific circumstances, if certain setbacks can be met. So I just want to clarify that largely for the public record, that this is a permitted use in this location, and it will obviously come before you for the full consideration in terms of site planning based on how this informs that discussion in the future.
Just one simple question on the greenhouse gas emissions. Is that going to negatively affect our proposal to reduce the city's overall emissions?
Right. If you ask very specific questions, our consultants are not here, and I'm not the expert at answering that question.
What I want people to do is to ask the questions.
Right, I'll write it down, and absolutely.
And have them look at the tape, or relay what kind of information you think we should have. So feel free to ask your questions, or say what you think would make this a better document, but don't expect answers today.
Yeah, but also, Madam Chair, if those questions are not available, yeah, if those questions are not available tonight, within the public review and comment period, you can do so and forward those to Glenn or myself. Those will be forwarded to the consultant, and they will be responded to during the final presentation of the EIR for certification by the planning commission.
I'm just going to say that I think what, one of the things that's missing from this is the history that happened when city council approved this. For example, on the scenic issue, the city council designated a very contained area to allow this kind of a fulfillment center. And so, in the question of, is it disrupting the scenic view, I think it's good to look at what they did. They basically protected everything up to the industrial zone and on both sides of the 10 freeway. There was also a planning commission report that probably got in the council packet, which had all of the questions the subgroup of the planning commission had looked at back two years ago, in terms of things we wanted to know. And that had, it had an awful lot to do with what was going to happen to our roads, and those, basically those kinds of issues. So I think looking back at that for questions that should be answered, I think that would be helpful. I'm going to just throw out one more thing. I was disappointed in it, because I don't like the alternates. I think one of the alternates has to be, this is potentially a fulfillment center. It might just be a warehouse. I mean, it may not be a fulfillment center. It may be an end distribution center. But I think one of the alternates should be, what's the impact of a fulfillment center, and the other should be the end distribution center that doesn't give the city all the money, and the fulfillment center gives the city an incredible amount of income, and is a really good reason to potentially have this. The distribution center doesn't do any of that, but I think that should be one of the alternates that is looked at. And I think the alternates were not as creative as they could have been.
And the traffic impact or implications of the two different types of facilities is very different, and one might not need the findings of overriding considerations where the other does. I mean, it's, I think you're right, that's a good alternative to take a look at.
I was surprised that we didn't have photo simulations in the draft EIR. Do we not typically get actual photo simulations showing the project?
We have them as part of the major development permit, the architectural designs. So that's not part of this report. You will see those when it comes back to you in July.
Okay, I just thought I would see them as part of the whole scenic corridor and view impacts discussion. It's odd to have that full discussion without having the building portrayed on these, and these photos that are presented. They should have the building part of them.
Noted.
So you're asking for that.
Yeah, I would ask that in the final EIR, that the building be shown in the photos to see the impact, because otherwise...
And I agree with you 100%. I think one of the, to me, the major weakness in this document is the fact that they look at aesthetics and just say it's less than significant. What they go through and explain that this isn't a Riverside County scenic highway that I-10 isn't, and this section isn't, so nothing applies, so we don't even look at it. If you look at our general plan, our general plan says that it is a scenic highway, and that it talks about protection of the scenic corridors, and it says that all thoroughfares and freeways are designated as scenic corridors. It also says that Indian Canyon is an enhanced landscape street. And we're not just supposed to be protecting mountain views, we're supposed to protect desert, you know, native desert as well. I think Chair Womack is right, or Chair Womack is right, to point out that there was work done previously to focus this down into, trade-offs made, have it in just one small part of the city. But I think all of this needs to be addressed. The fact that you just say it's not significant, and they devote an entire paragraph, the whole report, to this. I think that this is something that needs better treatment, and they need to recognize what our general plan says. And I would say that dovetailing off of that, they, there are things that, if you're going to permit something that is not in accordance with a general plan, you can absolutely do that. But there are mitigation measures that can be made. And if you say it's not significant in your EIR, then you don't even look at mitigation measures. You don't look at ways of breaking up the building of...
Last color.
You're not looking at anything. And I think that should be pursued.
I think that the commenter who asked for simulations of people driving down 10 was also correct. I think we need to see that. But I would also show it from the areas that were preserved in the trade-off that was made, as well as what the simulation will be here. But there was a trade-off when this was approved, in terms of the designation of the area. And I think, I think those should be shown.
Right, but just, what the photo simulations may show, and what the further analysis of the scenic impacts or the view impacts, the aesthetic impacts might be, might show that you need to add something else to that list of overriding considerations, and that's view impact.
Yeah, and we may, that may be something that you're adding, is that it has, it does have a view impact.
Right. When the project comes back for the planning commission hearing, you'll see the colors. And when we take it to our consultant and address your concerns about aesthetics, we will have them do some photo sims and evaluate it based upon, are there things we can do to the building to make it less impactful?
Well, yeah, and I think it might argue towards further consideration of one of the alternates, which was the multiple uses on the same, rather than one large square building. It was different types of warehouses and industrial buildings.
Right, but that's not the proposal before you.
I understand that.
Madam Chair, I also want to add one more, I'm sorry.
I just don't think you can hide the fact that it's going to have a scenic impact.
But by that same token, if they move the project site 2,000 feet up to Dillon Road, they're an unincorporated area, it's going to have the same visual blight. Nothing is going to change.
And it was moved across, we lost one across the street, that will have exactly the same impact.
I might also just want to add, I mean, some of this is planning consideration, but it's not necessarily rising to a SEQA conversation or a SEQA impact, right? So SEQA is looking at impacts under SEQA, under state law. And so, while it's undeniable, there'll be a visual effect, or I don't want to use the word impact, because that has a very specific meaning under SEQA, it not necessarily something that is rising to the level of an impact. So I just want to be very careful that we're differentiating between what SEQA is looking at versus what you all, in your role as planning commissioners, might consider when this does come before you, in line with the findings of the development permit or whatever action is coming before you. And so, a lot of what we're talking about can and will be analyzed in the staff report and provided to you, but it may not be something that gets addressed in the EIR, because it's not a SEQA issue. It's not an impact. So we just need to be careful that we're delineating between those two items.
The other thing that really stood out to me was, this is all construction impacts, and what I didn't see was impacts of the project operationally. And, you know, I'm assuming that's where the transportation issues come in, but there weren't issues, I mean, I think at least it needs to be analyzed. Is the aquifer underneath this? What about the dripping of oil into the water? You know, what kinds of, what kinds of operational impacts might there be in addition to traffic? And that, I want to, when I look at the building, I'm not worried that they won't know how to construct it. I'm sure they'll know how to construct it. I'm much more worried about what impact it has on the city long-term, if it has, if the operation has an impact.
Right, and that's what the report does analyze, public services, utilities, and transportation is one of the main sections of the whole report. And it does give us modeling as to what we can anticipate as to the number of trucks once construction is done, and the level of service on the streets, and the vehicle miles traveled to the site.
Is there no mitigation, Chair? I mean, if it takes down one of our bridges, you know, our bridges, what impact does it have on Indian Canyon if we don't have the bridge? I mean, those are things, and I know that that may not entirely be SEQA, but I want to, that's what I want to know about, is how do those trucks get across when our cars can't get across?
Right. So in the table that I mentioned, there's a whole section on transportation, and what's significant and what's unavoidable. And it'll tell you what traffic control plans, and this is Pages 1.23. So there's a whole schedule of items that have been analyzed.
Mr. Rotman?
So I didn't, there's, I know this is a little vague, but is this a spec building, or is there an actual operator? I think, I think we need more information about the project itself, the details, whether, you know, they kind of approached it both as a combination of sort and non-sort, just kind of figuring out, you know, what the middle ground is. But I think, as you said earlier, we need to have both scenarios explored. And if it is a spec building versus somebody who actually signing, who's going to operate it, if it's an Amazon or something else, I think that needs to be clarified. I'd like to see detail on the number of bays, you know, that the building has. I didn't see anything about that, a number of truck bays.
Right, there's 128.
128, okay, I missed that. And then, also, in terms of operation, how many employees will be at the site at any given time?
That's in here. That's in the report, yes.
No, no, that's a total number of employees. That's not necessarily...
At every shift.
Oh, I didn't, that wasn't clear to me.
Right.
It was analyzed for that amount, anyway.
It was. And the applicant has not stated the tenant, and that's not really a planning issue that we discuss.
For SEQA.
For SEQA, so... For SEQA, so it could be a distribution, or it could be fulfillment. Where, and when the applicant was here during the study session, I, if you can remember, they.
They weren't clear.
They weren't clear.
And so we have to assume, that's why I want to see, I want to see the alternates as both of those. So we know if we're getting, what we're going to get with each one.
So from my own experience with wind in our neighborhood, we have a house next to us. The wind hits the house and it turns back, it reverses. You've got windmills immediately next to this, upwind of this project. So I think there should be some sort of wind study on the impact on those windmills, because you've got a 50-foot-tall building, wall, next to a 70-foot-tall windmill. Obviously, landscape materials in this zone is really critical. And I think something needs to be really explored about what works and what doesn't work in a high-wind zone. In terms of air quality, based on my calculations, there's about 17 to 19 acres of asphalt. That's a lot of heat island effect, as also off-gassing of hydrocarbons. So that kind of crosses over to greenhouse gases, as well as health benefits, health impacts on employees. So I think something needs to be addressed about that. I didn't, you know, they talked about the greenhouse gases, but I think this is also about health and safety. It doesn't talk, it talks about SCE, are they planning, and it talks about the DECE, but it doesn't say that they're committing to being part of DCE. It also doesn't address whether they're putting any solar on the building. I know it's probably not required, but it may be something that needs to be explored.
With cannabis, we require that cannabis facilities be DCE. And so that's, that is also something that we should be looking at as to what requirements, and staff should be looking at that. And just as a warning, that may be something that we, you know, we think about. But that was the way that we dealt, not requiring, necessarily requiring solar, but requiring that they be, they, you know, they be in the most, the best category of the desert community energy. So that, I found that all missing.
Noted.
Yeah, and then on public services, so again, I kind of did, I looked at their vehicle trips per year. And this is oriented to Rick, which is why I asked you to stay. And I don't know the answer, and you may not either. But during construction, they have over 250,000 trips over a 13 million, a 13-month period. Once it's in operation, depending on their approach, it's either 574,000 trips per year, or 779,000 trips per year for, during operations. With that kind of traffic, do the roads need to be designed in such a way that it doesn't cause future long-term maintenance for the city?
Yes. So it's not really a SEQA issue, but our conditions of approval for this project will include the type of street section that they will, they will be required to design. They will be required to build out their half of Indian Avenue, plus a median island, the whole length of their, of their project, as well as 19th Avenue. And then their onsite pavement and stuff. Typically, for a project like that, it's usually concrete. It's not usually asphalt, because of the weight of the trucks. And the street section that we're going to require would be more than sufficient to handle the truckloads that they'll be putting on the road. And then there's another warehouse building that's actually already, I don't know if you've all been up there, but it's already been tilted up on the Desert Hot Springs side behind the Cochillin project. Those tilt-ups are already up. And then they're actually required to build out the entire traffic signal at 19th Avenue, which they've already been conditioned to do, and they've already, those plans have already been approved. So the mitigation, a lot of the mitigation out there is going to happen before this even puts a shovel in the ground.
So then that raises the other question, does this EIR need to take into effect those developments that are in Desert Hot Springs and potentially, you know, adjacent?
There, it's a thing called cumulative impacts. And we, there's a table in here also about everything that's proposed in Desert Hot Springs. And as you know, there's another 1.9 million square foot building coming to the north of this. So that, all that's taken in consideration.
And for Rick, why do they, why are they only being required to build out a half road if they're going to use both sides?
Well, the Cochillin project has already built out the east side of Indian Avenue from 19th North.
So it's already built out to.
Completely built out, yeah. And then they'll be out, they'll build out the west side, plus the median island, which is a landscaped median island, all the way up to 18th.
Okay, thanks.
You, you brought up something that was on my mind with going through this report. And that is that this EIR, the cumulative impacts are project-specific, which makes sense. That's, you know, this applies to this one project. And I was just wondering, as we go through this, not that it's relevant necessarily to our approving it or not approving it, but I'm just curious, is there an agency or an organization or more that look at cumulative impacts across a broader swath? Like the South Coast Quality Air Management Region or the Cochillin Valley?
Right, AQMD is, has sent me a comment letter already. So they, they wanted all the tables, all the modeling charts, they wanted all of it, so they can run them, run the numbers themselves. So we anticipate a letter from South Coast Quality Management District, yes.
So that's the agency. So we, we, because of the financial gain to the community, which is substantial, if it is actually a fulfillment center, not a distribution center. Because I remember that discussion when we discussed it a while back. Because that's really what it comes down to, is, you know, are we willing to have a large building blocking some of the view in exchange for some pretty significant tax revenue? And that's, you know, that, that's one question. But it wasn't clear to me, reading through this, you know, is there anybody who's really looking out for, because there's 50 to probably 100 of these across this region. And so, and each of these individual communities can do like we probably will, which is to say, you know, there's enough economic benefit to us that we're going to override some of the concerns we have about greenhouse gas emissions. And so I just, that's, I was just curious, how, you know, if we can do it, and everybody else can do it, is there an authority that can say at some point, override and say, you know, there's just too many of these going in? Do we run the risk of that, or not?
That's a very technical question of a consultant, I mean, for.
Not only that, I guess, that's a regional question. We can certainly manage what comes within our own jurisdiction, so, but not the whole county. It can be county-wide, however, we'll still have our general plan and our zoning ordinance to evaluate against all these projects. So we can control what is proposed in our jurisdiction, but not regional-wise.
Right. It just, yeah.
I would also just add that, you know, the city is, is the responsible agency when it comes to this specific project. We send this document out to responsible agencies as a part of SEQA law, South Coast Air Quality Management District, CVAG, other regional agencies that have responsibility of other aspects of development. And they can provide comments on, on the analysis.
Also, more importantly, car trans, you know, so one of the commissioners mentioned earlier, the, the concern about the quality of our roads and bridges. Yeah, this is going to be reviewed and commended upon. And I'm sure they're going to impose or add some conditions of approval to the city's condition. So car trans will be reviewing this as well.
I'm assuming also that the Water District involved would comment on.
Absolutely.
I know we had one project, I don't, I might be the only one who's. There was one that was right on top of our aquifer. And the Water District came in and asked us not to, not to approve it. Because they couldn't handle the truck, the truck drippings, the potentials for the truck drippings on top of the aquifer. So I, I just, that's something I still want to know about. It may not be an issue, but I want it, I want to make sure that we aren't doing anything.
One of the attachments that you'll be receiving in your materials when this project does come for consideration before the planning commission, is a water assessment document that we asked for, and we received it. So that will be reviewed by the planning commission at the appropriate time.
Other comments? Have enough from us, more than you wanted?
Yes, very, thank you, yes.
Madam Chair, we have, but I also want to caution that the statement of overriding consideration itself is a voluminous document. It will be very specific as to why we'll be asking you to make that statement of finding. So it will address some of the concerns and some of the issues that you raised tonight. It's just that some of those do not belong technically in the DER itself. But in that document, you will be, a review, you'll be asked to review before you make that statement of overriding consideration certification.
And just to go back, is asking for a different alternate, is that something that you think our consultants will be able to do?
Absolutely, that, that's a very legitimate and valid comment that we will put together a staff and present it to our consultants.
Thank you for all of your work on this. I know that we, we talk about it, I know that there's been tremendous work that you've been doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, going back to my agenda. Commission reports, requests, and comments. There being none, planning directors report.
Just a couple. The first one, and I'm glad he stuck around, is a shout-out to the city, but also David Newell, in that the Inland Empire section of the American Planning Association nominated and also awarded us a merit award for our housing element in the category of opportunity and empowerment. So we have an award-winning housing element after, congratulations. And to you all, too, for helping to shape it. And so that's exciting. They are handing out the award tomorrow night, actually. But that's very exciting news, to get recognized for what was a somewhat tedious process, but has proven to be fruitful. And so thank you to David for his work, and again, for all of you in participating in that over many years. The other thing I wanted to touch base on, and I've kind of been warning you for a little while, but we're, we're close. And so obviously, with the rollout of our online application system and direction that we've received, and, and continuing to roll that out, we are continuing our move towards more paperless agendas. And so we have acquired and just about set up iPads that we will be distributing to each of you. And so at some point in the next week or two, we're going to have you come in and set you up on that, and sort of show you how that's all going to work. I think at this point, we've landed on a fairly simple SharePoint, yes?
Yeah.
Yes, so you know how we're sending emails, especially on a project like today, where there's a lot of interest? We're sending multiple emails with a lot of correspondence, and it sometimes gets hard to keep track of. One of the benefits of this, in addition to moving paperless, which we may disagree on the benefits of that or not, but is, the idea is there will be a SharePoint folder that will be sort of on your home screen, and you open that, and your agenda, and all of the supplemental materials are in there. And when we receive public correspondence, and let's say Anita uploads it, similar to how she's been emailing it to you, it's just in there, and it's available to you immediately. And so that's one benefit to it. So we're looking forward to that. It will, you are able to bring it in and have it in front of you at your meetings to reference materials or notes and other things that you, that you, that you've made. We will still have paper copies of the agenda available here, for those who want to come in and look through it. And, and that's, that's what we're doing on that. There was one other item I wanted to say on that, that is escaping me at the moment. Yes, thank you, that was, that was it. So the other part of this, and this has been a conversation for a little while, is that as part of that, I think you've all received notification of your City of Palm Springs email addresses. And so each Board and Commission member, no, okay, so that will be rolled out to you as part of this, but have been assigned to you. Okay, so we will, we'll, we'll get that all sorted out as part of this rollout. But this is, again, a citywide discussion, and in part, it's related to FOIA and different obligations that we have, that you, and it's also to protect you all as representatives and commissioners for the City of Palm Springs, we need to move you into doing business into your City of Palm Springs email addresses, so that we're not able to open up a FOIA request on all of your personal emails, for example. So we will be moving towards that. What it means is, and, and that will be set up on your iPads, so you don't necessarily have to put it on your personal device or anything like that. But there will be sort of a bit of an obligation on your point, part, to make sure you're just checking in on your iPads for updates, because we're going to move to notifying you of, of city business through those means. So that's it, I'm sure there's a lot of questions on it, we're going to walk you through it. So that's the update on that. I know there's going to be lots of questions and concerns, but we'll kind of figure it out as, as we roll it out. And David has just flagged for me another, our zoning code team is going to be back the first week of June. They're going to be doing a whole series of stakeholder meetings with small targeted stakeholder groups, continuing conversations with city staff. But we will also have our first kickoff open house at Demuth Park in the multipurpose room the night of June 6th, starting at 5:30. So we're excited about that. And we will have a series of boards there, and just folks can kind of get a sense of what the project is, what we're seeking to do, and just some, some fairly basic level information at this point, given that it's a kickoff. And then we'll be doing some more technical work through the summer, when not that many people are here, and then doing certainly much more robust and targeted outreach as we get into the fall. So we're excited about that. We just received the flyer of it today, and kind of still sorting out some details, but I'll send all of that information around to all of you. But really excited about the work they're already doing and getting underway, and a lot of the conversations we've been having, and keeping that project moving. So that's it for me.
You have the dinner, don't you?
Yes, thank you. One additional update, I, I sent the email around, but there is the joint meeting of all city boards and commissions with city council on Monday, June 16th, beginning at 5 o'clock at the convention center. So that will be, dinner will be served to commission members. And then following that, at 6 o'clock, there'll be a publicly noticed joint meeting of all the boards and commissions. And each boarding commission will give a very brief update on sort of, you know, who, who you all are, what our mission statement or goals are, and what our major accomplishments have been over the last year or so. So Kathy and I are working, sorry, Chair Wermick and I are working on a draft of that, and we'll circulate it around to you all for any further input. But if there's anything you want us to take credit for, shoot me an email, or let me know, and we'll make sure that we fit that into the presentation as well. But it's going to be a fun and probably lengthy night, so looking forward to that. And I think that is now it. Questions?
Field trip tomorrow, stolen?
Yes, so we, for those of us who are able to, we'll be going and having a meeting with the Desert Water Agency to see their facility up in Whitewater. So I think you have the information on that, but it starts at 9 o'clock, so we'll see you there. Great, that's all I have, I think.
With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting until 5:30 Wednesday, June 12th. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting until 5:30 Wednesday, June 12th.